Call a meeting to order. Any mistakes that are made by the acting stand-in chairman? Just excuse him and he'll remember this somewhere. Need a motion to accept our agenda?
Madam Chairman, I'm...
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
I've got an interest.
Madam Chair, make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Second. All in favor? Next item is a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those two, okay. Mrs. Baker.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry?
We've got you scheduled for a board.
Yes, sir. I have submitted for your review. It is a copy of the local plan, local Perkins' plan, that will be for 2019-20. There are two parts to it there. The one that I would draw your attention to, most importantly, is the one that is stated, That is the actual dispersment of the funds that have been approved for the school system. These are federal funds to be used for professional development of career technical teachers and personnel, to be used for special population students, which include low socioeconomic students, special needs students, students of active military, homeless students, and there is a list of special populations that I can provide should you want to look at it. And then to be used for instructional resources such as equipment and things such as site licenses with some of the computer programming and to pay for the Project Lead the Way fees that are a yearly fee. So if you would like to look at those and have any questions, I'd be happy to explain it. This has been reviewed with our CTE advisory board and has been looked at by our college representative who also has a signature responsibility to approve this. We have received funding announcement, which we are about $3,000 less than what it was this past year. My speculation is that that has to do with the fewer students that we had enrolled this year in the school system. The other piece that I would bring to your attention is the performance assessment that is also located there. That is an assessment of goals or performance standards, if you will, that we are expected to meet or surpass every year. I will tell you that the four years prior to this year, we did not meet those. There was always one somewhere along the way that we missed. This year, we were 100% in reaching those. Usually, the area where we were lacking was in the non-traditional enrollment of students, and that is placing students in coursework where their agenda is 25% or less in the work population. So we have been working on that in the past several years, and it finally came to fruition with the numbers now currently there. Any questions for this? I'm also extremely excited, and I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, that to tell you that yesterday we received notice that we received a $37,500 grant for equipment that is not the standard equipment that normally you would receive with Perkins' funding. We will be using that to purchase motor control trainer that will be used with our electricity two and three class. We will be receiving a CNC machine, which will be used with the new class, which is computer system, computer manufacturing systems, class that we will be starting. And then also automotive trainers that will cover the electrical systems of vehicles. Good stuff.
Any other questions or comments? Any action on this? The emergency.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved the 2019-2020 local Perkins' Career and Technical Plan to approve as presented with the knowledge that amendments will occur as information becomes emitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aren't you glad to have that inexperienced chance? We're getting ready to move into the Malady Shepherd. For discussion of ESVA School Board policy updates.
Thank you. It is very exciting, earth-shattering. In February 2019, the SVA submitted 51 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board, a chart showing the updated policy system prepared by staff members noting the proposed changes. An additional 16 policies are presented for review but have no recommended revision. The first reading of the proposed changes was at the April 3 meeting. This is the second reading and an opportunity to discuss the changes, and recommendation for approval is scheduled for the May 1, 2019 meeting. The experts are here and will be happy to answer any of the questions that you have about the policies.
The biggest part, Miss Shepherd, is just word changes or verbiage or...
Sometimes code changes or cross-reference changes. Absolutely, that's what, when I was going through, that's exactly what I saw.
You really have to read it, too. And it's a lot, I mean, there's like 50 something off, so I'm three quarters of the way there, but what I've seen so far is just some of its grammar.
Yes. Yep, sometimes they take out "will" and put in "shall" or something like that, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
This is second kind.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion, yes, sir. Moving right along, Mrs. Shepherd, discussion of custodial services contract update slash renewal information.
On the January 1, 2015, Warren County Public Schools entered into an agreement with GCA Education Services to provide custodial services for all Warren County schools. Warren County Public Schools removed the contract with GCA for the 2016-17, 2017-18, and 2018-19 school year. The recommendation is to renew the contract with GCA Services again for the 2019-20 school year. GCA Services has agreed to keep the cost the same as the 2018-19 school year. The contract price for July 1, 2018, I should say 2019, through June 30, 2020, will be The contract price shall be paid in 12 monthly installments of $163,291.90. This is the fifth, the fourth renewal that we're, that we are allowed to do with GCA Services. Our next, next year, we will have to go out for proposal to do a new contract for our custodial services. GCA has been a great partner to us. They started January 2015, and after the first contract, they reduced our costs because of our budget at that time, said we needed to save a little bit of money, and they reduced our costs fairly significantly. And the only increase that we've had since we've been with them is when we added Warren County Middle School a couple of years ago. So they've been a great partner and can keep our prices the same. So at the next school board meeting on May the 1st, I will recommend that we contract with GCA again. And just another little side note, 26 employees have remained with GCA Services that were employees when we're in county public schools, so that's about 51% of their work staff. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Since we won't have a budget made first, we may have to wait.
Okay. Rob is just telling me, since we won't have a budget made first, I may have to wait until the May, the next May meeting.
They're going on work the seventh?
Seven.
Yeah.
That's true.
And it could wait till the June 1st meeting. We just need to let them know that we're, that we are interested in, and I think we like to do it as televised meetings so that the public is aware that that's what we're doing, so.
Since all of ours are televised now.
Yes.
I mean, I'd let them know, though, that we're just waiting on.
Yeah, so it could either be at the second May meeting or the June, the first June meeting, either way.
Okay. Next item is update on renovation plans of AS Rhodes Elementary School, Mrs. Shepherd.
Yep, before we get started, the building committee met this week on Monday at 1:00, and we talked about the renovations of AS Rhodes Elementary School. And today, we've invited Randy Jones, who's with OWPR, who's been working hand-in-hand with us in order to get the design to wear something that our teachers and our principals and our schools want to love. So I'm going to hand it over to Randy, and if he can get the, our plan. I can do it?
Nope, sorry, Randy. I'll give you a quick update on what we've been doing. We have met with the faculty and staff, I think, at least two times and then several more times on a more individual basis. Our team of architects and engineers have been in the building, on top of the building, under the building, everywhere they could possibly get to, to document build conditions. So we've got a really good handle on what the building is. Ah, thank you. So just for a point of reference, this is the existing floor plan as it currently exists. I think this is actually pretty accurate and up-to-date. Currently, you enter the back of the building. Here we go. Right in this area, this is really an awkward place. So one of the first things we, we talked about was actually relocating the office area to the front of the school, and in order to do that, we would need to create, obviously, some parking. So the first thing our civil engineer did was made an appointment with town planner, found out what their requirements were. We came up with three different options. We tried to pursue the option that we liked the best, which was just straight perpendicular parking that would give us seven spaces. I think we encroached on the setback by about five feet in one place, so that was a no-go unless we wanted to go through a 90-day process. So we opted to go with a different layout, which still gives us seven spaces, so I think we're still good there. But we also looked at the ramp, and the current handicap ramp will have to be replaced, so that's also included in the project. We have gotten, the design development set has been set to our estimator, we got the estimate back, and Miss Shepherd has that, and Greg has had that to look at, and we are right around the $3 million mark right now. We're getting ready to send the final drawings to the estimator here next week, so we will be a little bit better on that. So the blue represents what we call minor upgrades. The entire building's being renovated, but we wanted to just distinguish between where we were actually removing walls and relocating plumbing and those types of things. So the entire building is, is getting a brand-new roof, is getting a new HVAC system, which are rooftop units, gas-fired rooftop units using propane gas. And we've relocated the entrance here, put in a new handicap ramp. You'll notice the office area is, is much larger. We've created a secure waiting area here so that you can come in, there's a transaction window. So if the administration chooses to do this, and this is what you as a board would like to happen, when parents come to the school for pickup or whatever, they will come to this transaction window, and they will speak to the person through the window, they'll show their ID, but they will stay in this area. This area is intended to be a waiting-type area, as opposed to being able to just come in and wander around the school and go to the classroom. And this also keeps people out of the office area. There's not room in there for, for all the parents to come in, and this is a great school because everybody knows each other, nobody wants to catch up with each other, and it can become a distraction. So this, although there'll be some disappointment that they have to go through this process, it will streamline things and it will make everybody much safer in the long run. So the secure entrance is really important. This is being done in all new school construction now, so it's an enhanced security feature that I think is necessary.
It's very similar to what we had at Ressi Jeffries Elementary School.
Yeah, yeah. So restrooms were a big problem in the school. If you had been there, or if you go out there now, you can see directly into the restroom, you can see under the stalls. The doors are propped open, so there's, there's lots of issues there. So we decided that the best thing to do is just get those spaces and relocate, and we put two new boys and girls restrooms here. These are the type of restrooms where the sinks are located out here in the vestibule so the teachers can watch their students wash their hands, and this will also prevent some of the things that go on in there with paper towels and things like that, particularly boys, they just love to stuff paper towels down into the commode.
What happened to the fifth-grade bathroom?
Well, that's if you get them to wash their hands, so you know. So at least, at least we know they're going to be washing their hands.
What happened to the bathroom down by the fifth-grade hall?
We have repurposed all these spaces, so I'm going to kind of run through these. So as we go to the left, we kind of have these labeled, here's two third-grade classrooms, two fourth-grade classrooms, two fifth-grade classrooms, this bedroom. Here we have a teacher lounge. The teacher lounge actually has a faculty work restroom in it, so they won't have to go into the office to use the restroom that we have in the office. Then we've also got a nurses clinic, which has a three-piece restroom. The third piece is a handicap accessible shower, so that is now going to be available. Nurse will have cabinetry, refrigerator, they can store medicines and those types of things. So the, some of the restrooms are right in this area. You can kind of go back and then you can see, here's where the lounge was, here's where the office area was, which is really just two rooms and a storage room. Here was one set of restrooms, here was another set of restrooms, and then there was a third set of restrooms. It's kind of interesting how it was set up. One thing I want to point out was, is you'll notice all these classrooms have these old storage closets. When we met with faculty and staff, the, those were not very functional, so those are going to be reviewed and they're going to be replaced with floor-to-ceiling casework with sinks in all the classrooms and bubblers so the students can get a drink of water without going out into the, into the spaces. We have a second-grade classroom here, we have a small conference room here for TDT, and a storage room with our roof access. We've actually enclosed the platform area to create a teacher work room with a Xerox machine and those types of spaces. And then we took the old computer lab and we took the clinic out of that and made that into a kindergarten with a handicap accessible restroom. And then we also enlarged this restroom to make it handicap accessible, so now we have three classrooms with handicap accessible restrooms, which more than meets requirements for a renovated building. Of course, these are all handicap accessible, this is handicap accessible, and we also have a sped classroom that has a handicap accessible restroom. And then, as you go downstairs, we have Title I, which is still down there, and we have added a restroom and a gym for a closet down there. We got that priced out. We were initially thinking it was going to be a very substantial item, but to add the plumbing and the fixtures down there is about a $12,000 item, so it was, it was pretty minor, and it gets huge, makes a huge impact on how that space functions.
One other question that Mr. Williams had was the fire doors, and they're not there any longer, so.
I was going to say on that one, but I heard it.
Yeah, so we had, we had a really great meeting with building official, and we were working under the current code, and he suggested that we might want to consider the updated code, which is great because it allows us to do more things, and one thing that allowed us to do was to get rid of the fire doors. So that was, that was a huge win for us, and we'd had a problem open, put them on electric, electric magnetic, all those devices, so that was a great, that was worth the meeting right there.
Before we move to the outside, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I guess, is there, is the basement accessible for wheelchairs?
The basement is accessible from the outside, but not from inside the building.
So if somebody was going down, they would just go up the ramp at the front and just go, no sidewalks available?
I'm hoping one day, maybe this can become the art room, and maybe Title I can move up into one of these classrooms. It all depends on how your enrollment works out over the next five to 10 years.
Then I have one more quick question. In the, in the accessible bathrooms, is there, is there room for a changing table? Because if there are students with wheelchairs in there, we're going to need a changing table in one of those bathrooms.
That is a good question. I don't know that that came up. We have a room labeled down here as storage that was going to be, we have to label a storage just for labeling purposes, but it's actually going to be useful for it. I'll check on that. I'm not sure that came up in our, in our discussions, but we can certainly accommodate a changing table, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
Perfect, yeah.
And the other question, comment that Mr. Williams had was, the SRO, should it have a door to the outside? And your answer, or Andy's answer was that it could, but there's, that's such a small office that you would probably want to take the other door out.
Yeah, if you do that, you take this door out and see it right here. Otherwise, you just eat up most of the useful space in the office. Is that something that you think we want to do, or you want to think about?
I want to talk with the school principal first, yeah.
So all the, basically every room is getting new finishes with the exception of the kitchen, new flooring, which will be a luxury vinyl tile, LVT, which is a no-wax type floor, so you will not have to strip and wax the floors in the summer time. We are doing new ceilings, new lighting, new paint, new cabinetry, and you can see here the amount of cabinetry that's being added. It's basically two walls of cabinetry. So we worked with that, worked through the faculty and staff on that. The office area, we have one main office, but we do have some other areas for some other interior-type spaces that if somebody needed a desk and a place to work, there are places to do that. Do you all have any questions on the plan?
You said rooftop, gas-fired rooftop.
Seven rooftop units, yes. And they will have the ability to have some temperature adjustment, individual controls into the classrooms.
How about down where Title I is?
That's also going to be fitted by the, by the roof.
Oh, okay.
Substantially the same. Pardon? Front entrance substantially. So the front entrance, why'd you ask that? So we are basically doing restoration work on this entire front entrance. We're taking out this and putting this new back, this back in. The steps have to have some repair work. The cupola is going to be repaired, all this molding and trim. So we want to replace anything that's rotted out or dry-rotted. I understand we may have some inhabitants up in here that we're going to have to look at, but, and of course, roof, the roof is going to be replaced with a slate-style architectural shingle. It will be a, basically a 40-year shingle that will have a slate, but it's a fiberglass type shingle, which will be more historically accurate. We do have as an add alternate to replace all the windows with a more historically accurate window, similar to what we have at Skyline or some of the other schools, which would be white, which would really, it would really look great. I think about how the school, you can see the school across the river up there, and the windows would really make that pop, and it's funny, I've talked to several people in the community when I've been in and out of businesses, and we start to chit-chat, and they ask me what I do, and I tell them, and I say, "We're working on the AS Rhodes project." And you're like, "Oh, that school could be so beautiful." You know, they always say "could." "Could be so beautiful," and I think it has a lot of potential, so I'm hoping that we get really good pricing and that the windows can, can really be the icing on the cake, so to speak.
There's little chimneys stay up there? Pardon? The little chimneys stay up there?
The little chimneys do stay up there. They're non-functional. We had to, we had a hard time kind of figuring out where those were going and how they were supported in the basement, but we figured that out, but at one time, they, they were functional. But, so I ended up having to go to Richmond to Department of Education and going through a bunch of microfilm. I never found the original four-classroom building, but I did find the building when it was expanded, I think, to eight classrooms. So we at least had a good start on it, but those are always a pretty, pretty amazing to see from the 1930s. So our site layout, like I said, our preferred was to have basically perpendicular parking, but it caused this line right here to be five feet closer. And I'm an architect, so I can say, I don't know why that makes a Philippines difference, but it does to the town, and so we came up with this, this option, which gives us the same number of parking spaces. What it did is it just pushed, pushed our pavement a little bit more to each side, but we still have same number of spaces, two handicap parking spaces, and then visitors, five visitor spaces. So overall, for the little bit of pavement that we're doing, this is adding a huge amount of functionality to the building. We're also replacing the concrete sidewalks and the ramps and so forth. So this is currently acceptable to the town, so we don't have to go through any type of variance or any type of exception progress. And then just to kind of show you, this, this is not AS Rhodes because you can tell the windows are different, but this is the type of cabinetry that we're putting in. You'll see it's floor ceiling. We're going with, I believe we're a ten-foot ceilings. So our cabinets go all the way up, and we talked to the teachers about that, and we explained to them that, you know, these other cabinets, those are not going to be the ones you get into every day, but when you have seasonal items, and maybe you only use it Halloween, or you only use it in spring, then a set school to get those things and throw them out of the way. If there's a way they could find, to utilize storage, they'll use it, so they were excited about this. And we also revamped the cubbies. The cubbies are now designed to hold the backpack and the coat completely within the cubby so that the coat don't actually hang out and spill over, and that's a change, so they seem pretty excited about, about this aspect of it. So I want to keep it brief. Do you all have any questions? And you said sink. Yes, we have a couple in each room. Yeah, sink in here, and the sink has a bubbler on it, and also, it's like a drinking fountain. It's not cooled, but it allows them to get a quick drink of water, or fill a water bottle if that's allowed.
Mr. Johnson, you back to your site plan?
Yes, sir.
And it really doesn't affect you, it affects Greg and Mr. Drusher and Miss Shepherd. I question why the town, off to the right, when they put the new road in, you have curb and gutter in the sidewalk, goes all the way up, but it stops where our exit is, you know, where the buses drop off, where the parents drop off and go out. Why did that sidewalk stop there and not carry on through to the school with all the children, you know, walking? So I think that's something we need to ask.
Ask a question. And maybe that's something the town considers, you know, as part of this project, while this work is going on out there, maybe something that...
Well, they do their own curb and gutter and all that, but I mean, round town all the time.
Seems like a great idea.
So I wonder why that wasn't included in the upgrade of St. Edward Road, why didn't it be there? Just a, just a question, nothing, nothing to do with you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
Is there anything I can answer for you all that... Is there anything I can answer for you all that I haven't already talked about?
One half bid.
So we are scheduled to be complete this Friday. And we'll do our quality control check next week while it goes to the cost estimator. Once we get the cost estimate back, we will send that to you guys and then we'll ask for permission to advertise. So our goal is to have this thing ready to go as quickly, as soon after school. Is that, what's the date for school now?
Seven.
Yeah, so we're gonna be really close, really close, beginning to get started.
Roof, roof is gonna be the first line?
We, we're going to suggest to contractor that they do part of the shingle roof first. But because of the way the, this roof is having additional insulation put on to meet the energy requirements, it's gonna affect how that flashes into the backside of these roofs. So we had a lot of discussions about it and that's ultimately why, one of the reasons we decided to just put the roof into the overall package so that the general contractor could really coordinate all those types of conflicts.
With the shingle now, what seems, but you couldn't go down that backside because you won't know where to do it.
Right, right.
And the flat roof isn't as, isn't in as bad a shape as the shingles.
Yeah, you can see, there's like some shingles that have to replace here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's, it's pretty much end of its useful life. You got your money's worth.
Asphalt shingles to get the slate up cheaper than the slate shingles that aren't slate that are good.
Yes, so we've done that. We've used that and the problem with those, they fade. They fade over time and then, so our nice charcoal gray roof became a light gray plasticy looking roof. So we have changed how we approach that and I think this is much better.
Saw a couple million dollar house.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, once we get our estimate back, we'll get to you guys and we'll be getting you a set drawings to look at also. What will be the process? Do we need to come back and request to advertise or is that something I can work with?
So what we did for the roof package is we just let the board know that it was gonna be out and then once we get it back in, the Melva's.
That's what they're evaluating.
To accept.
Great. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Great to see you all.
Thank you.
Any of you just?
Yeah.
Just like you.
All right. I see.
Thank you.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes. Uh huh, uh huh. Who's working? So this relates to the AS Roads project. It's discussion of contracting asbestos removal at AS Roads Elementary School. And I'm not gonna read this entire thing, but prior to the renovation of AS Roads Elementary School, asbestos will need to be abated. There's approximately six hundred linear feet of asbestos pipe insulation in the crawl space and sixty-five hundred square foot of floor tile in the hallway in several classrooms that needs to be abated. There may be some additional abatement needed for the floor mastic. As the asbestos removal is occurring, the floor mastic will be tested and determined if it contains asbestos. We believe that it does because of the year, so, and we do have a price on that, which is a little less than five thousand dollars. So all of the asbestos at AS Roads Elementary School is encapsulated and is not harmful to our students or our staff. Asbestos needs to be abated when items containing asbestos fiber is disturbed. The recommendation for the May first meeting will be to contract with Apex Companies to abate the asbestos at AS Roads Elementary School. Apex has determined the cost of abatement for the pipe insulation in the floor tile will be fifty-five hundred dollars and the cost for the floor mastic was another little over four thousand dollars, forty-two fifty. We have asked, Apex has a cooperative contract with Prince William County Public Schools, which contains language in section thirty-eight that allows Warren County School Board to contract with Apex for asbestos removal. So on this cover sheet, there is a summary of the work that Apex will provide. So at the next meeting, we will ask for permission to contract with Apex and we'll want to do that right after school is over in June to get that work done prior to starting the rest of the renovations at AS Roads Elementary School. That work has to be done when nobody else is in the building in order for them to remove the asbestos so nobody's impacted. Be happy to answer any questions.
Seven, eight days is what it says to remove it. Twenty to get it through.
It's like seven to nine or something.
Seven to nine, something like that. And no one can be in or out. Does anybody work outside, just kind of go in and out?
So they put up, they did it at Ressi Jeffries Elementary School and they put up big plastic sheets of paper in the places that they're working. So there could be people outside the building doing grounds work and things like that, but really it's nicely.
I thought you meant the principal.
Yeah.
On the roof. I'm assuming that all the six hundred linear feet is just the old pipes going off the board?
Exactly, the old pipe insulation. And we won't have to re-insulate it.
Because they won't use it again. Yeah, so it's just, just tear it and go.
One of the things that Randy didn't mention is they're gonna remove the radiators that are in each of the classrooms whenever they do their renovations, so those will be taken out.
Yeah, that pipe insulation will be, it will, I call it a slow process. This is what they call plugback. And if you're very within a minute. And I wouldn't want to be in with that crawl space, especially we're starting to get narrower and narrower to work in.
So at the May first meeting, we'll probably do a not to exceed number, just in case we run into any additional asbestos whenever we're doing the removal, but...
How does this compare with Ressi? Size wise and work wise?
Right, so Ressi Jeffries was, let me remember my numbers, close to two hundred thousand dollars for asbestos removal, so, yeah.
I don't really exactly know either, but you're right.
Yeah, I looked it up before the building committee meeting and it was right around two hundred thousand dollars for, because they, somebody has to monitor it, so that's a cost and then, you know, and then the people have to abate it as well, so that's a cost. And square foot wise, it's very similar. I mean, you know, it would be a very similar per foot cost, per square foot cost. And the Ressi project was an emergency procurement. This is a, like, this because it is a cooperative contract, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Shepherd, we're gonna move on now to food management services.
Okay, please, on the right folder here. On Thursday, February the fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Warren County Public Schools advertised a request for proposal for a food management services company for the purpose of entering into contract for the operation of a food service program for our school system. On Monday, March the fourth, one firm, Sedexo, attended the management brief proposal conference. On Friday, March the twenty-second, Warren County Public Schools received one proposal in response to the RFP and that response was from Sedexo. In Sedexo's proposal, there is a cost increase for, there is no cost increase for the administrative cost of the management fee. Sedexo's administrative cost remains at sixteen cents per meal and the management fee remains at thirteen cents per meal. The management fee will not be paid unless the program generates a minimum guaranteed financial return of seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The agreement includes the following offerings, seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifty dollar guaranteed return, six thousand dollars in annual scholarships and as long as I can remember, Sedexo has been offering the annual scholarships, sixty-five hundred dollars in the backpack food program, twenty-five hundred dollar grant to introduce new programs into Warren County and then a thousand dollar contribution to Warren County Education Endowment. I believe that is new for this contract period. In Sedexo's proposal, what I want to spend some time today talking about is in Sedexo's proposal, there's an option for the current food service employees to become Sedexo employees. At the work, today, we will discuss the benefits and concerns regarding this option. So today Buck Smith, Greg and I, and Sue Ann Fox met with the food service employees and had a conversation with them about the positives of becoming Sedexo employees and of the concerns. So I'm just gonna go over a few of those. The reason we're considering having our food service employees employed by the food service company is for a couple of reasons. It makes sense to have a food service employee managed by the person, by the organization that's providing the service. Also, whenever, there's several years that we didn't give pay increases over two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, our food service organization was doing a fantastic job and was making money and our food service employees weren't able to get a pay increase because the rest of our employees weren't getting pay increases. So they were working hard and they were, and making money and they weren't able to, we weren't able to reward them with a pay increase. And then also, before we even considered switching employees to the food service management company, we wanted to make sure that the, our employees would be on a level playing field, that they would not be hurt by switching over from Warren County Public Schools employment to Sedexo employment. So here's the benefits. All employees will receive, if they become Sedexo employees, will receive a minimum of a three percent pay increase and any employee who's making less than ten dollars an hour will be moved to ten dollars an hour. Each employee that is working five point five hours will now be working six hours, which will increase their weekly work time by two and a half hours, so they'll get two and a half hours additional pay per week. Sedexo has a bi-weekly pay plan, which means that they'll get paid every two weeks. This year, we switched, this year, Warren County Public Schools switched from two, from two pays a month to one pay a month. And whenever you're making that sum of money, sometimes it's difficult to, to spread your money over an entire month, so the employees would benefit by getting paid bi-weekly. Sedexo has merit, merit pay, which is based on performance. So employees will be eligible for merit raises. Sedexo employees may be eligible for unemployment during the summer months, which they're currently not, which is currently not available to them. Their sick leave time would remain the same. Their health benefits would be just very similar. The only difference there, which would be one of the concerns, is that our employees that are on the key advantage two fifty would have to move from a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible plan to a thousand dollar deductible plan. So that's the only real major difference there. Sedexo's high deductible plan has, is, has a significantly lower annual deductible than our plan and then it also contributes more to their health savings account, significantly more. Sedexo also offers a plan for employee plus children. Warren County Public Schools only offers a plan for employee and family or employee child. So if you, if your spouse has a different plan and you have multiple children, Sedexo offers a plan for that. If it was a Warren County plan, it would have to be under a family plan, which the, which the rate is higher. Sedexo offers a fantastic tuition assistance program, two thousand five hundred dollars for approved classes for any employee taking a class in culinary or food service. That's fantastic. Warren County Public Schools is...
Six hundred.
Yeah, six hundred. So let's talk a little bit about retirement. When, if, if our employees transition to Sedexo, employees would still have the money that they contributed to VRS. They could either, either leave it in the VRS account or they can withdraw it at that time. And if they're vested, then they would be able to leave that money and have the employee and the employer contribution or they would be able to take out that money as well. Sedexo offers a 401 savings plan, which Sedexo contributes fifty cents for each dollar, up to six percent. So that's not something that we currently do for our employees. And currently, there's a mandatory VRS reduction that's taken out of our employees' pay. It's five percent each month, which will no longer be deducted from their pay if they become employees of Sedexo. They, they would have control over that money and, you know, our recommendation would probably be, you know, you to invest it into their 401K, but it would be their, their, they would have the ability to make that decision whether to invest it or not to invest it. So, so it would be their choice. So the concerns from the employees, when we met with them today, is would they still be able to get into games for free? So that was, you know, and, so I don't have an answer to that question. I'm gonna work through that. And jean Friday was another thing, or are we still gonna be able to wear jeans on Friday? So again, we're gonna be working through some of those, some of those things, but they just wanted to make sure that they were gonna get paid for a hundred and eighty-three or a hundred and eighty-six days if they, if they worked that, so. And then they had, they wanted to know what was gonna happen to their sick leave days if they moved to Sedexo. So those are things that, you know, we still have to work through, but I thought it was a very positive meeting. They were, they, you know, they asked some really good questions. They were very thoughtful in their questions, so Buck, do you have anything else to add?
No, I probably, you covered it well. I thought with, you know, we went over the VRS part, the retirement part, pretty thorough so that they realize that for those who are close to retirement, it obviously, they could retire from VRS and continue to work with Sedexo and start their 401K with another company or they could hold on to that. And at retirement age, they would have their 401K with Sedexo, but they could also then go ahead and withdraw from their VRS. They have that option. Or they could just cash it out in general. We went over what that means, how much of the contributions you would get that you would put in, which is a hundred percent as far as employee. And then the employer's contribution would be based upon when you're actually vested in the, in the program, so.
What's that?
Fifty. It may be fifty-one or fifty-two, but yeah.
The majority.
Oh, you know, Sue Ann, how many?
There are fifty-three.
Going around the table.
Are we bidding on something?
How many are there?
Plan one or plan two?
The original.
The plan one. Okay. There's three plans with VRS. There's plans one, that means you're hired two thousand and ten.
How many people?
Um, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but I want to say, Melody, do you have it?
I'm looking.
Ten, maybe. The managers, I know most of the managers are. It's not a large chunk.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Twelve employees are on plan one, five employees are on plan two and thirty employees are on the hybrid plan.
That's some of the hybrid plan. And for, for plan one and plan two, when you become vested, it's after five years, five years is when you become vested on plan one and plan two. The hybrid plan, you start to become vested after two full years, you get fifty percent of what your employer's put in. And after you complete your full third year, so in other words, you're going into your fourth year, you get seventy-five percent of what your employer put in. And then going into that fifth year, you get one hundred percent of what the employer put in. Now, at any given time, you get your contribution, you get one hundred percent of your contribution back. So you're, you're vested with that money as soon as you start putting the money in the pig bank, so to speak. But when you hear vested, that's how the hybrid plan works as far as that. And the other plans, plan one and plan two, you have to be with us for five years or with VRS for five years.
And the VRS can roll over to a 401K? And the VRS can roll over to a 401K?
Uh, yeah.
I would think you would be able to. I mean, but I don't know anything about VRS.
Take it out. You can take it out and then put it into your 401K.
I mean, 50 cents on the dollar, up to 6%, so that's pretty good to make. Usually only big companies do that. I know Sedexo's big, don't get me wrong, but I'm saying the real big players, and a lot of times they'll offer it to everyone. That's nice. My only, my only question would be, if Sedexo's here, and they've been here a long time, and I truly believe you guys do a tremendous job for our schools, but what if Sedexo wasn't here in five years or something?
So that would be this, very similar that we do with our custodial staff?
Yeah.
And those employees, the only people that, that we wouldn't be able to retain are the manager. Because there's some non, non competition, non, you know, something like that.
Be unable to transfer.
So Sedexo, I'm sure, has done this in certain places. What's the general retention rate?
It's very high. I, I actually have checked with all my, the people who have taken over their staff, either at the very beginning or in the middle. And it's a very high, I, I think it's always a difficult thing. Nobody likes change, but it's, it has a lot of benefits, as Mrs. Shepherd expressed. And I, I would like to re-express, if I may, how much I appreciate the thoughtfulness that's been put into this. And, you know, they mean a lot to me, so I do really appreciate that. But I think it'll be a good thing.
And that was one of the reasons we're doing it now, is we can come up with ways to do this so it doesn't harm the employee. It's the same benefits, basically, pay increase.
Even on the healthcare side, I mean, it's healthy. You know, it's a thousand dollars deductible.
It's the same insurance I have, actually. It's, it's really very good.
It's the out of pockets, not much, or comparable to our 250. I mean, it's, it's straight off. I think each individual has to sit down and look at it and go, you know, mentally, where am I? From the, from the outside of what you guys have said.
We've worked it out where, where their health insurance would be either the same or less than what they're currently paying. So, and that, you know, that's important to us. It's important.
You're in Clark County?
We're in Clark County, we're in York, Spotsylvania, Halifax, Palatine, Washington, D.C.
I mean, how many of those have the employees? Have the employees?
York County is a combination. Clark County, they're, they're county employees. Spotsylvania, they are Sedexo employees. And D.C., they're Sedexo employees. But it's, it's more than half. More often, they become Sedexo employees because of the, of the benefit to the school district that we take over the risk of any accidents and things like that. And they, you know, they already follow. It'll be a pretty easy transition if they already follow all of the Sedexo guidelines. And it's been such a wonderful partnership that we've had over the years that it should be a pretty easy transition. The insurance is what I have, and the 250 is a little bit better in some ways, but the, it's a very, it's very good insurance.
And it's still anthem blue crossing. So it's the same, they're, our Key Advantage 1000, they just have a different name of Care First 1000. And we've looked it over and it's extremely similar. I mean, almost it mirrors that plan. And the HSA, the Health Savings Account, as I went over today with the employees, is way, it's a way better deal than what we offer, to be perfectly honest with you. They offer, for the individual who starts an HSA account, a $750 seat money to start with. We offer 500. But we offer 500 regardless of whether it's an individual taking insurance out by a single or by a family plan or those types of things. Sedexo will make it, so it's like 1150 or 1175 to start seat money for an HSA account. Now, obviously, you're, you're going to pay more initially with that deductible with that. But as Mr. Williams said, you're, you're picking a plan based upon your family pattern of, of health, of health history. And that's what you're picking out the plan. By dropping the, by not having the 250, you know, as Spots had said earlier, that's the main difference. Our employees in general, our trend has been over the last couple of years, that more of our people are going to the Key Advantage 1000 plan. And more are coming off of the 250. The 250 plan itself, anytime you hold a rich plan like that, plan out there, and I say rich means, you know, the bells and whistles that comes with it and this type of thing. Eventually, those type of plans to some degree almost price themselves out after a while because of the contributions that you have to make toward those as the employer just continues to increase. And that's why a lot of our people, I think, have gone to the 1000 because it's more, it seems to be more affordable. Co-pays are the same. I think overall, it was a very good meeting.
Sounds like.
Very, very good meeting. They had some good questions. I think some of the questions are more on the Sedexo side in terms of how the pay actually happens, you know, when they exactly get paid, and what pays and things like that, which it'll just be a change. It won't be a different type.
It did happen. I mean, at least you know all their employees already. You know, and they know you, they know their expectations. It's, it's not like somebody calling in, oh, that's not what I'm doing.
They might, they'll get different shirts.
Right.
And that is a concern.
But if we hear, you know, other concerns or questions from them, we'll pass them on to you at the fourth meeting so you have that in mind as well. And we provided for them today as well, some information regarding VRS. And also, Ms. Bolton, our benefit specialist here, her business card is attached to that was handed out to each of the ladies. And if they have questions, they call in in regards to certain type of, you know, benefits, whether it be health or whether it be VRS.
Do you guys have any questions that maybe we can answer?
The, the only question is regardless of which, which way we choose to go on this, the administrative fees or anything like that don't change.
It's not going to change, yeah. The only thing that will change is the guarantee. So.
How would that change?
It, it changes because, like with our health insurance, we have to put so much money towards each employee to make it at a particular rate. Sedexo is going to have to do that as well. So with them not being their employees, they're going to have an added expense.
So the guaranteed return would go up if we did not, if we kept it the same, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Awesome. So this, the 72 is?
Would go up. Would go up if we keep the employees.
If we keep.
If we keep.
If we don't. The 72 is, is predicated on?
Yes.
A guarantee.
How much does it change? 5%? 10%? 20%?
And then workers?
It's a 20, it's a 23, 25.
So it'll be about 50, give or take.
No, but actually, if, if they remained our employees, it was 93 or 95.
95 is 18,000.
18,000 was the, we'd say. To hold employees harmless, our disagreement was to hold them harmless with health insurance. And so to assist with that, we agreed to have a guarantee at 72, 750, to be able to allow Sedexo to not increase their health cost.
For one year?
Well, for the, for the duration of the.
Like the five years.
Five years.
Yeah. Because we're going to do one contract originally, and then we'll do four referrals, likely, if Sedexo continues to perform as they have.
And that guarantee is predicated upon not having a meal price increase?
That is correct. Yes.
Which we haven't had for quite a while. We haven't had a price increase for meals for a long time. We may be getting to the point that we don't have enough options.
We're required to.
The state may say you have to increase your rate. So if that happens, that, that increases the amount of income that Sedexo will get. So that would impact it.
So currently, we're paying the cost for workers' comp insurance. That would, that would then go to Sedexo. We're paying for unemployment insurance. That would then transfer to Sedexo. So there's a lot of costs that would transfer to Sedexo that we pay because we're employing the current employees. We're employing the food service employees. Does that make sense? And health insurance, you know, we're, yeah. I know you're trying to process that.
And I'm, I am really slow about that because I understand what you're saying, but where does that price go? It's going to go down. So guaranteed return, how, where does it end?
So if, if the recommendation is going to be that employees go to Sedexo, so that guaranteed return, if we did that, is 72, 750. If the, if we choose not to do that and the employees remain ours, the guarantee is 95.
Okay. So what I missed was, 72 is guaranteed whether the employees get. See, I, I thought it was just 72 was our return. And then we were talking about where the employees pay or what makes it a 72.
That's what the employees going and the benefits that we spoke of would be held harmless of what they're currently paying. That would be that, that would be that 72. That was a good question.
Okay. I just couldn't, I grabbed my arms around it, sorry guys.
It's, it's a complex. We've been working through it for.
Months.
Yes. Yeah. Seems like it.
But it's what, I mean, it's like what Sue Ann mentioned before, keeping the employees held harmless was, was the reason we can do this. And it makes sense that the company that runs our food service has the employees as well. That's, that's kind of bottom line.
Well.
We talked about it since the beginning.
I was going to say, since I'm the old guy, this, this proposal was made about the second, third year at Sedexo. And I voted against it at the time. Ms. Poe and I, Mr. Kell, voted against it. The reasons were, at that time, it wasn't a good deal for, for the employees to move. And we didn't have a track record with Sedexo more than a couple of years. Now, we, we do have a track record. And the fact that they are going to gain some benefit and a mini raise and that type of thing, I think, I think it does make sense, just like I've always said about the Sedexo contract in general, that's, that's not the business we're in. It's not the business the schools are running, this food service. And that's why we moved it to an expert group and it's paid benefits for us every year. And I think now's the time to let those employees work with the company that, that they work for, really, because they really work for Sedexo anyhow.
I think one thing that, just looking at it from an HR standpoint, this type of things, is it allows those employees of that group, if you can start to get performance-based incentives and those types of things. That's something that when, when we're trying to move a whole group of people, it's a collective effort, you're trying to put that percentage across the entire, the entire body, trying to move the whole thing at one time. Where a year or two, I mean, you're being paid, or opportunities to increase pay based upon your performance. And I think that's what a lot of people, you know.
And it offers them some career options too. Sedexo, like Williams said, Sedexo's a big company. And they have contracts, not just with school systems, but they also have contracts with, you know, with colleges and that kind of thing. I know Sedexo, I sent you a couple of unflattering emails from Morgantown, but Sedexo handles the concessions and the food service for WPU, for example. But, you know, that offers them some career opportunities down the road as well because they can transfer within Sedexo.
We had an employee from GCA that actually did that. They transferred from here to another, maybe even in Florida, to another account that GCA had. So, you know, and it was, it was seamless for them.
And we didn't talk about them in regards to our subs, where it was sourced for teachers, now ESS, they substituted in Roanoke, where ESS has an account came here, sub for ESS, sourced for teachers, and now will be teaching for us next year. So with a business, you know, that large, as you mentioned, with those type of opportunities, relocation can be desirable at, you know, at times as far as financially to be able, unless Gary.
We may also be able to attract people from other Sedexo accounts if they're moving to the area. So may also assist in filling positions.
All right. So we'll, we'll present that at the May first meeting. And if you have any questions between now and.
We'll be good. Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Sorry. I'm in favor.